Welcome to the October 30th, 2017, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds? Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Here.
Mayor Campana?
Here. Commissioner Reynolds is not here. Do we have a motion to excuse her, please? Commissioner Baldini?
So move that Commissioner Reynolds be excused because of illness.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carry six zero. Okay, we have the agenda in front of us. Commissioner Baldini?
I'd like to add an item, a new business item, at the end of this consent agenda, and I would like to have the item read, a report from the city manager regarding the recent windstorm that impacted the city on October 24th and 25th.
Is there a second to that? Commissioner Plord?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna make that item 4A. 4B will be the Marquette County Solid Waste item. Okay, we have the amended agenda in front of us. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Six zero passes. Thank you. We come to announcements. As probably everybody knows, this past week has been a devastating and challenging week for our city and the surrounding area due to the two days of high winds and storms. The worst of all was the loss of two people when they were swept into Lake Superior. Our thoughts are with their family members as they deal with this tragedy. There's also a good deal of infrastructure damage to the roads, our shoreline, parks and trees that we will hear about later in this meeting. As bad as it was, if it weren't for the efforts of the men and women, of the DPW, Public Works, our parks and rec, our police, our fire, BPL, BL Peaks, me and others that I'm probably gonna forget, it could've been a lot worse. These people were out there fighting it and trying to keep things running smoothly in the worst of conditions. So we have much to be thankful for their efforts. They're able to keep things moving smoothly and keep damage to the minimum. And lastly, I'd like to say, when you see people out there, be sure to tell them, you know, we have to learn to respect our lake that lays out there because it can be a very dangerous lake, and when you see people who are new to the area, please inform them and let them know this. We don't want to see another tragedy like we had this week. One other thing is, our next meeting will be at seven o'clock, November 13th. It's our reorganization meeting, and by charter, we have to start that one at seven. It will not be at six, it'll be at seven. Next, we come to boards and committees. We have one appointment tonight. That would be Annunzianna Sarioli to the Marquette Housing Commission for an unexpired term ending 6/14/2021. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we appoint Annunziata Sarioli, Marquette Housing Commission, for an unexpired term ending 6/14/21.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments anywhere? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes, six zero. Congratulations. Tonight, we have one presentation. That presentation is the Police-Fire Pension Board. We have Chairman Fireman Kirk Vogler. Kirk?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you. My name's Kirk Vogler, with the Fire Department for almost seven years. I've been on the pension board now for six. Just, it'll be a real quick, kinda recap, last year and everything that took place. A little bit of background, the purpose of the board and some of our goals is that, on a vote of, on April 5th of 1965, the city adopted Public Act 345. What Public Act 345 does is it provides establishment, maintenance, and administration policies that have to be followed, one of which is to have this board to look after its vitality and keep it feasible. And it's also dictates, you know, the city's contributions as well as employee contributions. A little bit of background, this is the current board. You have myself there as the chair, Mike Archikowski is the secretary, and we're both union-elected representatives that sit on the board. Mary Schlicht, she's the city treasurer, serves as our liaison. We have William Toomey, he's one of the trustees, and also then Gigi Gordon, she's another trustee. And these are just community members, citizens that reside in Marquette. And we, you know, I'll talk about this at the end, but we appreciate them because they're there, they don't have, they have an interest to sit on the board. They don't, you know, gain anything by sitting on the board. We had ten meetings last year, two of which were canceled due to quorum, and no unexcused absences. This is pretty much the pension system in a snapshot, if you could put it on one slide. Current members in the entire benefit plan are 127. We have active, so these are members that are paying into the retirement plan, police 33, fire 26, so we have a total of 59. And then, members that are receiving a benefit, 38 police, 29 fire, totaling 67, and then deferred of four. And deferred means that they're just no longer employed by the city, but they obtained the age where they'll get a benefit, or service years that they'll receive a benefit. Then the pension, as of September 30th of this year, sits at, or sat at $31,852,577. We just had an actuarial done, and it lags a year behind, and it was at 75% funded, our pension system. So, some of the things that we look at, when, you know, when we're sitting at the board, back in 2013, we changed, we still are through Wells Fargo, manages the investments and also the custodial services, but we changed to, before, the best way to describe it is we were kind of in à la carte with Wells Fargo. They had different places managing investments and then, you know, the separate custodial. Now, it's all in one area at Wells Fargo. And that's what we changed in 2013. It saved us some money to do that. Since we moved it to that, we've had 6.79% growth. So that's growth after payouts, benefit payouts, and everything, net of fees and whatnot. Another thing that we're always really excited and happy to be able to do is issue a 13th check. So our beneficiaries, the people who receive benefits, don't get a cost of living, any COLA or anything like that. So the ones that have been receiving a benefit for the past, you know, 20 or 30 years, it's the same as it was 20 or 30 years ago. So that's what this 13th check was established for, was to kinda give those people that have been out an extra check. It's a separate account that the city put together quite a while ago. It's doing well, and we've set up some, kind of, the board, some goals each year, and if it's met, then the extra goes towards this 13th check. And even sometimes, we'll discuss it, and we'll still issue a check even if the goal isn't met. But this year, on average, we did $425, and it's weighted, so that's an average. The longer you're out, the more you get, you know, and you have to be out for a minimum of five years before you receive anything. The board puts together this summary annual report, and it's basically, it's a little bit more in-depth than that last slide, but it just gives all the highlights and things that we think the members should know that are in the benefit. And then it's distributed out to all, all active members, whether you're contributing or receiving a benefit. Some of the goals, these kinda stay the same each year, because it's, you know, it's our fiduciary responsibility to maintain due diligence and monitoring and reviewing investment activity for that pension system, and then to continue to manage and operate the retirement system, ensuring its viability for current and future retirees. Some of the things, now, these change, kinda year to year. Retention of trustees, when I first got on the board, we were short a trustee for at least a couple of years. We've got a real strong board now, but again, just throwing that out there, that two of those terms expire in 2018, so we'll need a couple more trustees to sit on the board. Hopefully, they can re-up again for another four-year term, but then they have to actually take four years off before they can sit on it again. Funding of unfunded accrued liability. So we're currently at 75% funded, and the desired is 80% funded. We've had discussions, I've had discussions with my members, we've taken some steps as bargaining units, talking about the police and fire departments to work towards that. I've done a lot of reading on this as an evaluation, and there is no quick fix to it. It's just a slow process, and if you look across the state to other Public Act 345 systems that are, their funding ratio, we're sitting comparably pretty well at 75%. And then finding strategies to facilitate a program that now has more retirees than active members participating in it. In that last slide there, you could see, it was, I think it's about 15 members receiving benefits, more than actually paying into it. So those are some of the issues we have. That was it. Real quick, real short. Any questions?
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Just some questions. What does 5% mean? I mean, you said you want to go from 75% funded to 80% funded approximately. What does that 5% mean? Is it 5% of the $31 million, or?
No, so the 75% funding ratio?
Right.
That's if we stopped paying into it today.
Right.
It would last for 75% of the members currently in it. As far as putting a dollar value to it, I couldn't.
Okay, because you said you would like to be at 80%. I mean, at 75, you're still in good shape.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The 80%, I guess, is just what these organizations are talking about at the state level as a goal. They'd like to see them at 80%. No, 75% funded, we're doing quite well.
Okay. We received a letter at the commission here last year saying that our MERS program, two things were happening. One, the return on investment was low, but you're getting a 6.79, which is not bad, and that also, people are living longer. And that was a problem, so we had to put more money into MERS. Your trend line, which is a good trend line, that people are living longer, but has our actuarial people talked about where this might take us? I mean, we're, we're really not expanding the police department or the fire department. The city is sort of staying about the same place, but we have more people living longer, and is anybody being concerned about that, or down the road, saying this could be a problem for us?
No concern. There are some things that we do, and it's on a, I think it's a seven-year cycle. We update the mortality table. That's coming due just next year, I believe. It'll be updated. And then, as far as our rate of return, you had mentioned, that's almost 7%. That's what our actuarial is using to do all their calculations, so they're extremely pleased with that rate of return.
Yeah.
But, no, we have, Michael Gano comes up from downstate, and he's just a wealth of knowledge. I can reach out to him and get more questions asked, or answered, rather.
If you're gonna do the seven-year cycle, that'll be, you know, something.
Yeah, and I sat on the board once when we did that, and it does change or alter that percent funding, that 75%. When I got on the board, I think we were around 71%. So in the six years, it slowly trended upward. And I know that that mortality table does usually kick it back a percent or two, or, last time I sat on it, it did. So that's potential, but still, you know, comparably, it's sitting quite well.
Well, and thank you for being on the board and monitoring that, so, thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
I know a few retired firemen, and during budget season, excuse me, I asked if there's anything you want to add to the fire department, but they said, yeah, we want to increase the pension. So would that be something that, you know, just jokingly, they're joking about that, but I asked, you know, your fire chief, he said, well, maybe next year we look at it, but is that something your board would have to say? Is that something that all the active members would have to, if, say, you wanted to increase the pension for retired people, you'd have to, would that be something your active members have to vote on? Would that be something your board would vote on? How would that, how would that work, just out of curiosity?
That would have to go through, it wouldn't be anything the board would do. That would be the specific bargaining units, the Marquette, you know, local union, firefighters and police.
Oh, gotcha, so, something like that, gotcha.
Yeah, and I, we, it has been, because that is a huge benefit to both the police and fire departments. We realize that, and we're happy, we're very happy we get it. Because we don't pay into social security, so we don't collect social security. So this is, you know, the only thing in retirement that we get for a benefit, aside from putting money away on your own. But, we did increase our, the fire department did increase our contributions from 5 to 6% last year. And I believe as well, the other city units did as well, the other plans as well. And I know that police are in negotiations, I think, right now, so I don't know what they're doing. But, in the conversations I had, it sounded like they were gonna follow suit with that. So, we are trying, the conversations are being had in the union meetings and stuff like that, to try.
Basically, you're saying that if they want to increase the pension, they have to tuck their former brothers and tell them to get, put more money away from them, basically what you're saying?
Right, yeah.
Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Well, I'd just like to thank you and certainly the other members for being on this board. Do you have a comparison, percentage-wise, this year to last year, in terms of how much it was funded?
The funding ratio? Yeah, last year, we were at 74%.
Okay.
It went up one.
Pretty close. And then, I know we're talking about the pension fund, but can you talk about healthcare in terms of what you get now, and then, I guess, when you retire?
Into retirement?
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, we have three plans, and it's across the city. And when I started, I was in the buy-down plan, which gives you an HRA as well. And I'm kinda getting a little bit specific, but just to show, back then, when I started, the city actually gave me money in my paycheck towards my healthcare. I'm on the same plan now, and I'm pay, I think, almost $200 in co-pays, or in premium sharing, you know, with the city. And then, going into retirement, so, we do have really good healthcare. I don't think you'd talk to anybody that says otherwise. Some, you know, our premiums have gone up a little bit, but that's kind of the sign of the times. Going into retirement, I know there's some differences between police and fire, but on the fire side of things, we get $250 a month towards a premium, but it can only be used towards a premium. And then, I'm pretty sure the new hires, anybody that was hired, I'm gonna say before 2015, or after, I'm sorry, doesn't get anything towards retirement healthcare.
Well, Kirk, thank you very much. Again, a good presentation. We appreciate you coming here. You're not at 100%, but 75 is a good figure compared to other government entities. We realize that, and the fact that you're going up is also a good sign. So, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Now, we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment, residents may address the commission, or they may reserve time to speak on one of our upcoming agenda items. You have three minutes. We need name, address, city or township. I'm an open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission?
Frank Chapero, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Our new statue at Nemusso Park is awesome. People would like to see the face and hands painted a skin tone. What a shame the bottom branches were cut from the pine trees, though. Why? A once-parked area now looks urban, similar to Father Marquette Park. Who keeps making these decisions to remove the greenery from our public spaces? An all-male board is imminent once again. We need three or four women on board at all times who contribute equally to the men, because there's enough testosterone bouncing around here to fill a boxing venue. This restricts sound thinking, as we witnessed September 25th in Mr. Plord's closing comment. Of the mere five women who've served us in 20 years, two were recalled, two failed to contribute much, and the fifth, maybe the best member we've seen, is leaving. One of few who spoke for the people. Too bad the males didn't allow her to make a difference, vote-wise anyway, so why bother running? People are better off volunteering where they're heard. No wonder so few people consistently show up here to speak. October 10th, the chair responded to public comments, stating he's been on this board for four, six years, four years, not six. It seems like eight. And who cares, anyway? No one. Residents are more interested in responses to public concerns like suicide, homelessness, excessive cutting at our parks, erosion at Shyrus Park, and the blunders at Flounders, Lakeshore Site, and Lighthouse Park, which still remains unavailable to its rightful owners. October 10th, Mr. Plord said suicide is not city business. How about homelessness and all else that he neglects to respond to? He's more concerned with telling us what he can't do than addressing what we can do. Both here and the chair seem unable to digest our comments, and when rebutting, they refuse to provide substantive examples. Initially, I'd referred to homelessness, not suicide, as lowering police morale, until after the meeting, when the chief told me of a recent bloody suicide at Flounders. No, it wasn't a coincidence. The fact is, suicide is so prevalent, there's always recently been one, but it apparently doesn't affect this board as it does most of us. Suicide is city business when it affects the majority of our residents, and city-paid personnel are needed to respond. October 10th, Mr. Plord also interrupted a public comment regarding a little-known fiasco on Harrison Street, claiming it didn't pertain to the item, which was a fence that abuts the construction zone. It was logical to assume the items were related. The fact remains that you've betrayed every family on Harrison Street. One resident with that type of knowledge estimated the job took two months longer than needed, resulting in lost use of driveways, heavy machinery noise, exhaust fumes, dust, and sight of the gorgeous outhouse he provided for workers who spent many days elsewhere. You're likely oblivious to the inconvenience you caused them, the duration of which was inexcusable. The world's most tolerant people must live on Harrison Street, right here in Marquette.
Anyone else?
Good evening. You're in Malankin, Marquette Drive, here in the city of Marquette. Thank you for appointing a fellow commissioner for my housing commission. Just for a bit of information, out of the six years that we have had, our director, she's only had a full board for six months. So hopefully, we will have a board longer than six months as a full board. It becomes challenging when you don't have enough members, and you have a board of four, and it gets to be a split vote, and it kinda fails. So, thank you for giving us another board member. Far as the week that we had, what an incredible week, far as we had for the city workers, keeping everything in line. I only lost my power for about two and a half hours, which is not too bad with everything that happened in our community. Far as I'm concerned, there's no other place better than Marquette to live and have all the city workers make sure that everything is working properly, your water sewer, streets. I mean, the power company was feverishly keeping the trees from falling onto the power lines. In fact, I was going across the, where the veterans facility is, and I thought we had lightning, and actually, it was trees falling onto the power lines and becoming so bright that it looked like lightning. And they shut that off in no time and fixed that as well. And so, attaboy to all the city workers that keep us all safe. Thank you for doing your job as well as you do.
Thank you.
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Oriana Drive, Marquette. Thank you. Thank you, one and all, for everything you've done over the last year. It is always difficult. People are gonna complain about this, that, or the other thing. You're gonna be right, you're gonna be wrong, you're gonna be unable to please everybody. It's not gonna happen. But ultimately, over the last year, I think you took decisions and made decisions that you consider to be best for the people of Marquette, and that is what you were elected to do. And more importantly, I think you looked over the next hill. In other words, you looked into the future and you made decisions that ultimately will benefit all of us in the future years. And that's really what the job of this commission is to do. And you have done it, I think, extraordinarily well. So as a citizen, I want to thank you for that. And I want to encourage those of you that are still going to be here after the election to continue to work in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Lutemberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I guess I'll start with, there's another amended agenda. Again, these are things that come up, granted, you might be taking things off. I didn't catch why you have an amended agenda, but it's an amendment to something that was supposed to be done last week and gives us all citizens time to organize our thoughts. So I'm here to say for one last time, I hope I don't say anything that gets me cut off. I've been cut off because I repeated something a fellow commissioner said. I've been cut off because apparently I went off on a tangent. I just want to say, I'm not a professional speaker. I don't get paid to come up here. Neither does anybody else in, behind me. We're here on our own, you know, reconnaissance. I basically, I'm on my smoke break from work right now, so I can come and talk to you. So being cut off because I might go on a tangent doesn't seem very inviting for other people. If my train of thought isn't as structured, I'd like to give you guys the same restrictions you give us. Please, if you're talking about something on the agenda, give yourself three minutes. See how quickly you can get your points across. It is really difficult. So when I, when I bring something up and get cut off, I, it's unfortunate, because what I'm trying to say before I got cut off was, Mr. Frazier, please don't joke in these chambers. A joke was taken seriously, and I was reprimanded for it. This seems very serious, and I wish we could bring up a more of a cordial governmental operations, instead of asking people who oppose the fire contract that, what job they might do for the city, or who they work for, or if they have any pending items with the city. This, this seems like the degradation of what Mr. Stonehouse was just commenting and complimenting you on. And I'm sorry that I have to be one of those who has had a different reality in front of you, but I want to step down, and I want to make sure that the other candidates, and please, to every candidate that's running on any board anywhere, please come to these meetings, because this is the real point. You have three minutes for everybody to get together in the same room for me to address. Now, Mr. Baldini, Mr. Campana, and Mr. Angeli heard my idea for rejuvenating the power plant and the hospital. I'm stuck here talking about my personal getting cut off, instead of what I can do for the city of Marquette. And that's unfortunate. So please, continue your work, I guess, but please let us have more freedom when we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna move to the consent Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Support.
Seeing no comment, this is a roll call vote because of a resolution. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries six zero. Next, we move to new business. We do have three items. The first item is a discussion of the city report on the storm damage from last week. City Manager, can I ask you to lead off, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I apologize for abandoning the city at the hour of need, but I was on my way on a trip when this storm hit, so I wasn't really running away. Uh, but I was on my way on a trip when this storm hit, so I wasn't really running away, as some of you might expect. But with that said, um, in my absence, the staff, I think, did an exceptional job, uh, keeping things together, uh, attacking the problem, and staying focused and on task with, uh, with what needed to happen. Uh, I've invited the, uh, relevant department heads here tonight to speak to their individual areas. John is here from the Parks Department, Scott from, uh, Public Works, Eric from, uh, Facilities. Who else? Ian is here from the Fire Department. Yeah, I see Kurt, but I'm ignoring him. No, Kurt is here from Wastewater, and then Blake Revolt from, uh, the Police, the Fire, sorry, the Police Department. I think I'd like to start the conversation with, uh, Scott Cam Benzey and ask him to, uh, give you an update on, uh, what happened or what we're, what we're addressing as far as the, uh, infrastructure. I did tour with him today and view what was damaged and what was happening, and, and I could tell you that a, a plan is formulating, and, and we're gonna work on some things, uh, in sequence, so I'll let Scott begin the conversation.
Good evening. Uh, so far, uh, just looking at things in terms of, uh, manpower expended, uh, we've probably put upwards of twenty thousand dollars of just labor into storm cleanup at this time. Equipment costs are probably running around fifty thousand. And I would say we're probably about halfway through the total cleanup from that storm. And I should add that there was kind of a aftershock of a storm there, too, if you will. Uh, we did a, a good part of the initial cleanup, and then a few days later, we got hit with another storm that did some additional damage. Uh, so I, I expect by the time it's all said and done, we'll probably double what we've spent so far. Some of the real areas of damage, uh, if we start from the south, uh, we've got, uh, a hillside, a bank of the Carp River that's starting to collapse a little bit along, uh, Utility Crossing that we need to immediately attend to. We'll be looking at bringing in a contractor to help us address that, and the City Manager will kind of keep you informed as we work through that process. That's probably one of the things with the most immediate need. Um, as we move to the north, Picnic Rocks, and Eric might touch a little bit on this, too, and, and what they had planned, but, you know, as we walked through Friday, you noticed the, the parking lot, uh, was pretty shredded. And, and not only that, there was, there was quite a bit of debris. And, you know, a lot of those, the, the riprap that was washed up into the parking lot, you know, some of that stuff was probably a foot acrossed. Some of the, the slabs of asphalt, uh, were probably ten by ten or fifteen by fifteen that, uh, the waves got underneath and actually floated them back in the parking lot. That's, you know, a couple thousand pounds of asphalt that got moved by the water. As we, we move, uh, a little bit north of Picnic Rocks, uh, we had an intersection that was essentially completely underwater at, at Fair and Lakeshore Boulevard. Uh, that required, uh, immediate detention as the homes that were on the southwest corner, the water levels were actually approaching the floor elevation of their walkout basements. Uh, as we move north from that intersection, the stretch between, uh, Fair and Pine, where that comes out, we probably had anywhere from twelve to eighteen inches of sand, as well as other debris that were blown clear across the road and the adjacent bike path. Uh, we made a, a good deal of progress on that as far as the cleanup. Several of the outlets, as we moved to the north, were plugged from the storm, and they were nearly overflowing their banks before we were able to get those open. Uh, at the Pine Street intersection there, uh, between there and Wright Street, the, uh, embankment that was on the lakeside was completely breached. And the waves, uh, from the, the lake were essentially flowing all the way into the Triangle Park, if you're familiar with that area. Uh, that area was completely underwater for a couple of days uh, before we could even attempt any of the cleanup in that area. Uh, as we move north of that, uh, one of the things that you'll notice if, if you kind of jog your memory a little bit, that whole area from Wright Street up to Holly Street, people used to complain that, uh, they couldn't see the lake as they drove up and down Lakeshore Boulevard. There's not enough rubble left to the wall between the road and the lake, um, to have that complaint anymore. You can see as far as you want to, looking out at the lake. And we continue to restack the rubble that's there to try to protect what we have. But most of that wall is now at the bottom of the lake somewhere. So that's a, a rather immediate need, not that we're going to, you know, fix it in the upcoming weeks necessarily, but that's a real consideration we need to look at or that, that road will be in peril. Several areas along there, the road was undermined, and the area between the, the bike path and the road, there were areas where it was probably anywhere from twelve to eighteen inches deep, where it was undermined. Uh, we were able to get those backfilled with gravel before the second storm. Uh, and we were pretty much right back to square one after the second storm. Uh, there's, there's no protection from that wall and any of the storms coming in from anywhere, probably from the east to the north, when the wind is blowing. Several areas where there are erosion at the island, and again, I'll, I'll let John and Eric talk a little bit more about that. But, uh, we need to, I guess, look into, at the future of what these storms are gonna be bringing at us and how we can kind of protect our infrastructure from them.
Thank you, Scott. Just in regard to those comments, uh, we've done some prioritization, uh, and maybe I should wait till, uh, everybody's done speaking, but, um, in regard to... Okay. Let's go with... Who wants to be next? John?
Well, um, I guess from a park perspective, community services perspective, uh, Lakeview Arena sustained a little bit of damage due to the winds. Um, you know, minor stuff that, uh, DPW maintenance staff was able to, uh, remedy or will be able to remedy shortly. So that was, uh, not a major concern. We did have a lot of concern that we could lose power, uh, at that facility, and, and we had a plan in place for that. Uh, with two sheets of ice, losing power is, uh, is quite a concern, so we had that kind of set up. Um, as Scott touched on, you know, probably the biggest factor, um, and it, and it crosses between both of our departments, was the erosion and the, the wave action on the parks. Um, the most immediate was Shyrus Park with the damage there. Um, and as we look at that, I think that there's gonna have to be a conversation as to, you know, typically, when, when, uh, we look at parking lots and redoing parking lots, uh, we look at resurfacing what's there, and that's not the case at this point. So as you, as you move forward, I think the conversation needs to be had as to, um, do we need to design that a little bit differently? Do we need to look at some different options there? Um, and, uh, kind of brainstorm that whole situation. And look at entrances into that parking lot, um, look at, uh, elevation of the blacktop, look at the riprap that's around there, um, as Scott mentioned. You know, as that rubble, uh, along Lakeshore Boulevard, you know, kind of comes in and it's scooped up and put back on top, you're just putting the smaller pieces back up on top of the bigger pieces. And so, um, the same exact things happened in that Shyrus Park. Um, so, you know, that, that situation isn't gonna get any better, um, if we, uh, simply just fix the blacktop. So we'll have to look at that. Um, and then another huge concern, um, that will require a conversation would be, um, the erosion, uh, south of the revetment there at Shyrus Park. Um, so erosion in, in all of its forms is a natural occurring thing. It's, it's whether or not we want to, um, invest in, uh, protecting the, the green spaces and the infrastructure that we have. So, um, a lot of the, the green space at Shyrus is starting to erode into the lake. You'll find, uh, some trees there that have kind of toppled in the lake. And then, uh, the beaches has, uh, started to come up to some of the park implements, such as the benches and, uh, the Angel Memorial there. So, um, that's a, a big topic of conversation, um, that I think needs to be looked at. And when we get into Presque Isle Park, um, I think that we certainly made the right call to close that at eight-thirty in the morning. Um, and I think that, um, you know, all departments involved, um, worked throughout the day to try and keep public safe. The one thing I guess I would stress with that would be, you know, if, if something's closed, please heed that. Make sure that, uh, you know, if a gate's closed to a park, that park is closed, um, we shouldn't be in there. I think probably DPW and Police probably experienced the same thing with road barricades. Um, when a road gets closed, people tend to drive around those. But, um, they're closed for a reason. But into the erosion of Presque Isle, um, it's been an ongoing topic of conversation with the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee. Um, as you recall, some revetment was done from the pavilion area down towards Sunset Point. Going a little bit back into history, um, that natural erosion around the island is, is, uh, continued. And, uh, after closing the park on Tuesday, we kept the park closed, uh, to allow DPW to do what they need to do, as well as the Police Department. And, um, part of that involved a lot of trees that were down, um, across the road. There was, uh, the arborist was in there as well as the DPW crews. And then, uh, also, you know, kind of analyzing that erosion to make sure that it was, it was safe to open. Um, Marquette Police Department helped out with, uh, some photos from the lake, um, kind of analyzing the spots that we have, um, that we keep an eye on. Nothing like Shyrus Park happened at Presque Isle. Um, the, uh, wave action just sort of exasperated a, a few of the trouble areas that we already have been monitoring and didn't, um, drastically affect any infrastructure. DPW crews did move, um, you'll notice that the Sunset Point parking lot is different now. Um, so the barrier's been redone and moved back, um, as a result of some of the undercutting on that shoreline. So, um, that's a little bit of a change. Uh, and the, and the rest of it is, is topic for future consideration as to what we do with, um, any, any attempts to stop that natural action, so...
Yeah, those two, uh, covered it pretty well, there's really not too much more I can add. Um, like John did say, at Presque Isle, we did move some of the parking back. Uh, we do still have to move some of the walking paths back, particularly around Cabalgum's Grave, and then also along by the gazebo. Um, we'll be doing that here in the, the coming weeks. Uh, we did have numerous trees down across, they're only Presque Isle, but Tourist Park as well, and then some of the, the Lakeshore Park. So we're getting those cleaned up, getting them safe. The biggest thing, one, was getting them down on the ground, and then we're coming back and cleaning them up. And pretty much everything is, is where it needs to be now, and if, if there's a few out there, if the public sees them, we ask that they, they let us know, and we can take care of that and eliminate that safety hazard. And just to reiterate, Shyrus Park, we did have fifty thousand dollars in the CIP, uh, for this budget year to repave that. Um, that's not gonna be near enough to do what we need to do if, if the decision is to repair it where it is, or, or move it, or whatever the decision is. So we're gonna be looking to, uh, get some, some ideas out there, um, bring some, or some, uh, ideas to you, get some thoughts out there and, and move forward and repair what we can. That's it.
Kurt, do you have anything you need to add?
One thing I'll just briefly touch on, the water treatment facility, the water plant, and some of our... Some of our lift stations throughout the community. Um, we're very fortunate to have, uh, backup power at our stations. We did have, uh, um, intermittent, uh, power shortages, but, uh, the backup power did, uh, work. Another project we did this last summer was, um, the water intake. Uh, we did some, uh, work on that for undermining. This is probably a good example of why we want, needed to do that type of project. Uh, this type of storm can really, uh, possibility been very, uh, had a, could have had a huge impact. We do plan on next year doing a follow-up dive, just to see, uh, the, you know, see the, see how the, um, the project, uh, worked out. Um, other than that, the water quality, we did operate our water treatment plant a little bit differently. Um, with all the waves, um, there just seems a lot more turbidity, so we did, we did have to adjust our membrane, uh, filters to, uh, meet, meet the water quality standards. But all in all, um, overtime was very minimal, and, and the water wastewater department, probably about thirteen hours. So we're very, uh, fortunate. And again, that has to do with, uh, I think, some good, good, uh, good operation, uh, some of our plants are in good, good condition.
Thanks, Kurt. Ian?
Sure, yeah. Uh, during the storm, the Fire Department personnel responded to twenty-seven emergency incidents. Uh, we called in ten person, personnel on overtime to cover the workload and also to add an additional, uh, emergency response vehicle to our response. The only issue that we ran into, uh, was on the water rescue. Uh, we were slowed down in our response a little bit by downed trees, uh, that we had to cut and move out of the way to get, to get to, uh, out to where we needed to at Black Rocks. Um, we had no firefighter injuries and, uh, no problems with equipment or structures being damaged. And that's about it.
Blake?
Um, thank you. Um, obviously, everybody's aware of the situation we had at Black Rocks. Um, our thoughts and prayers are with the family, uh, who we are in contact with daily. Uh, we're in the midst of formulating a recovery, um, attempt, um, with the Michigan State Police and the Sheriff's Department. Um, we're working with them. We've been hampered a little bit by weather over the last couple of days, but we're looking to get crews back out on Wednesday, uh, to begin a search underwater. Uh, most of the above-water, uh, searching has been done and completed, um, via the island. The one thing I really kind of want to mention is, uh, it takes an event like this to really showcase the staff here at the City of Marquette. You know, my hats go off to Public Works crews, um, the Fire Department, uh, BLP, especially, um, uh, the supervisor that we dealt with, uh, dealing with a lot of the issues that we faced as far as downed trees and traffic and controlling traffic and, and keeping people out. You know, obviously, it was a once-in-a, you know, twenty-five-year storm, um, and that storm brought a lot of people out, a lot more people than I think we expected, uh, to come view the lake. Um, and then with that comes, uh, the people that tempt, um, you know, and go to areas that they probably shouldn't have been. So, um, I think we're, we're gonna continue to work and try to educate people to the dangers of those situations, along with staff, um, and, and hopefully, I'll get that message across, so... As of now, we're in the process of, uh, beginning the recovery process, um, and, uh, I'll keep you updated, um, on that process as we go through it.
Thanks, Blake. And I guess I'll sum up in two ways. One, Gary Simpson is also here who acted in my place while I was out of town and kept everything together. And even though he doesn't have a speaking role tonight, he was very instrumental in, in keeping all of this going and, um, keeping things, uh, on track, so I want to thank him publicly as well. And before opening it up to any questions, uh, to just keep you advised, we're, we're putting in a, we're putting, we're trying to put together a plan to prioritize how we need to move forward. I think it's very obvious to me initially that the Carp River, uh, Utility Crossing is probably our most important issue at the moment. The pipes we're talking about handle all of the waste, uh, solid, uh, solid waste that comes from our sewer systems, uh, from the Chalk, Marquette Township and the City of Marquette. So they're rather large pipes. So they're rather large pipes that are, in my opinion, supported very well at this time, but I'm not sure that another storm, after another storm, it would be that way. So what what I've asked Scott Kembensey to do was put together a series of quotes because of time for a contractor to shore that area up as a first priority before the snow falls. We do have funding in reserves that we can utilize for that purpose. And then my intent from that point on would be to seek alternative funding or other funding sources to help us with these projects. I've made a few phone calls today and reached out to a few people, but have yet to receive any responses. But I'll be working in that direction. After that project is prioritized, then we'll probably be keeping the parks closed for the remainder of this season. I don't know if you've had the chance to look at Shires Park, but it is pretty much closed itself. And I think there's an opportunity here for us to take a long look and examine how we want to redevelop and reopen that park if we want to do it in the same configuration it was in, if we want to add more riprap or more land surface back to that park, or do we want to configure or reconfigure it in the form that it currently exists? I mean, there's a few options that I think we need to work through that are related to both practicality and cost. Our intent is to keep Lakeshore Boulevard open and to reopen it as soon as we can. I believe, Scott, you told me that you'll be back at it tomorrow and cleaning it up and at least get vehicle traffic open. But then for the long haul, we need to figure out how we're going to protect that road. Of course, with the ultimate goal being somehow moving it or getting it out of harm's way. And that is more of a long-term plan, but we're going to try to move as quickly as we can or move quicker to try to bring that into some type of reality. Presque Isle Park is of the same status as Shires Park. It can be reopened, however, it will look differently. And I think as a commission and as a community, we have to decide how we want to proceed with that. In years past, we've added more abutment and more riprap to the shoreline to stabilize the shoreline at city expense. Is that something we want to continue to do or we want to let nature take its course and configure the island as as it sees fit? So those are all things that I think need to be taken a little longer look at, and we'll be working at that probably over the course of the fall and maybe even the winter. But the most immediate work that I see is the sewer crossing at Carp River as a vital link for our waste system. So if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Kembensey?
If if we do nothing to Lakeshore Boulevard, how how will the winter weather, I guess, affect kind of having no protection?
Well, that's a good question. I don't, I guess we we're pretty much going to have to run on hope and luck that nothing really serious happens. The alternative, I think, at that point would be to close it. Of course, there will be, you know, concerns with doing that. However, the alternative of that is, I think, a very expensive plan to either move it or re, you know, re-strengthen it. And in either case, our building season doesn't allow us to do that this year. I think it's something we can certainly plan for next summer or next spring and hope for the best over the winter. I know that Public Works crews will do the best they can to create that that protective wall or that abutment between the lake and the shore. But like Scott said, those those piles of rocks were twenty feet high at one time and now they're three. And I don't know that we want to put that same kind of rock back in there. I don't think that's going to serve any purpose, but I guess I don't have I don't have a good answer for that question. I I I have some ideas, but nothing that's of great value at the moment. Commissioner Baldini?
I had the opportunity to tour the site with the staff. They took us out and they gave us a thorough look see, which I I thank them for that, and that was important. And they the staff did a great job. I went down early that morning. I live on Pine Street, so I could hear the lake. And I the the police were already there. There were some trees down and they had just they just, you know, blocked their things off and tried to keep the and a lot of people went down to look and see. And you can understand, it truly is an impressive thing to watch. But we do have to think about how do we discourage some of that? Because it really did tax the the police department and the fire department. They were dealing with trees down and other safety issues. But a couple of things, I I I was down there to see what happened to our our stone wall. It's gone. And I think we're dealing with high water. We're close to almost a record. I think perhaps Fred Stonehouse would know better on the numbers, but Lake Superior is very, very high. And we haven't even breached the gales of November yet, as, you know, we've talked about. And if we get one more windstorm, that that road is going to have to be closed again. And because it there's just nothing left there to to protect that that strip. I I did mention to the mayor and to the city manager that maybe we should take the opportunity once again to contact our federal officials and state officials and at least put our oar in the water again, looking for money, because it's a project that was very, very expensive. The other thing I have some concerns is the the assessment of the undercutting on Presque Isle. We were able to see some of that, and we obviously didn't go out in the water to get a shot from the the riverside. But the staff showed us where they stepped way back and they could see some cracking in the land indicating that this winter, if we get water and snow, which we will and some ice, that'll probably lead to some caving or collapsing of some of that property. And so that's a danger and something we have to watch with citizens. So I I would hope that the public would be patient with us and understand that some of these things are going to require precautionary moves on our part, because you look at it, look safe until professionals said, oh, look at this, and here's what we think could happen. So it it is something that that has to be looked at. But I don't know, what would it cost approximately to put that stone wall back? That ain't a ten thousand dollar project. And, you know, it's very, very extensive. And if we get another storm like we had, we could lose it again very quickly. So I think we do have to take some some action. I think things like picnic rocks and that, staff is already beginning to think about ways to to help out there. But the stone wall and the road, Lakeshore Drive, we're going to have to take some other very expensive action. And I I just don't think we have the money to do that, but we're going to have to do it because another storm will end up closing that, so. But I I thank the staff for really taking it. I mean, if you think about what happened to the community, those roads were flooding and the police and fire department moved, the trees were down around town. The BLP, we had power outage, but I think I think they kept the power on in the business community because of all that equipment doesn't operate, the doors don't open and close and so on and so forth. But we did get power back on in the community, so. And it but I thank the staff for for really their their getting in there and taking what had to be done, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, thanks to all the city. I did a I did a tour with Steve Campana and Tom Baldini and I worked with Public Works. It was a great tour of everything. And thanks to all the city staff, you know, DPW, fire department, police, everybody did a great job. And unfortunately, what happened was people just didn't respect the lake. I talked to somebody, I was at another settlement, I said, you know, the city closes stuff not because they want to, just to protect people from people, unfortunately. And what happened at Black Rocks is just unfortunate. And I grew up as a boater, and I learned to respect the lake over the years. I was taught by my family and family before that, respect the lake, and it will respect you. If you don't respect the lake, you might get in trouble. That's what happened. And if Presque, I know Lakeshore Boulevard just turned into basically a beach, it's all the sand down there. And the walls pretty much, the rocks are way down. But Presque Isle, if it when it opens again, if it opens again, I know the road is closed for the winter, but a lot of people like to snowshoe, ski and walk around there in the winter. Just be careful if it does open again. There is some erosion around the island, and Black Rocks area has the walking path out the Black Rocks has changed totally. There's a lot of areas that open to the lake and the there is not much of a walking path. There wasn't much of a walking path there before. I know Presque Isle Board, which I used to be on, is currently working on that, trying to figure out how to fix the erosion on there. But it is even worse after the storm. So, you know, and I remember three, four years ago, everybody complained about the lake being too low and blaming the engineers for letting too much water like now, it's way up there. As Fred Stonehouse could tell you, it's way up there, you know, so. I think it's this is the last storm, everything's behind. We had the gales of November. In October, we had September weather, the end of August. So everything's just screwed up in the weather these days. So who knows what November rain, maybe November would be nice and December would be bad, who knows? But anyway, thanks to Public Works and everybody in the city just did a great job taking everything. And, you know, unfortunately, what happened, but, you know, maybe it's a lesson learned by the city. We're going to have to maybe close if this happens again next year. We have to just close Presque Isle and have a guard there, either somebody from Public Works or fire department or place somebody to keep people from getting in trouble, you know. Unfortunately, that happened, and I feel bad for the families. But, you know, lesson learned, and we may have to change the way we act. So thank you again to the city staff.
Just a quick warning, I was able to go on that tour also where we walked along where all the destruction was on the shoreline. There are areas I that come to mind, especially down by the Carp River, the northeast part of Presque Isle and Sunset Point, where you can walk along the edge and you look like you're okay, but you have to remember that is undermined. You can be standing there and it that baby could go. So if you're out there, please respect it and, you know, stand back. It's 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 eroded very badly underneath and it's undercut and, you know, parts could fall in at any time. So bear that in mind. Commissioner Baldini, something?
Just one comment. The Mighty Journal wrote a extensive, I think compelling editorial on Sunday. And just in the last paragraph, it says, "We appeal to all area residents to take personal responsibility and operate in control when making decisions that could put yourself or others in danger during violent weather conditions." And and there's no way we can patrol all of that. And it really is going to come down to individuals assuming some responsibility and using good judgment, so. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comment, we're going to move to our next item. Number four, which is the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, the Municipality Recycling Agreement. City Clerk, could we have background, please?
Thank you, sir. The city received the attached correspondence dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen from the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, the MCSWMA, requesting we enter into an amended recycling agreement. A request was sent to all constituent municipalities of the landfill in January of this year, but the city had to delay consideration of entering this agreement until after our solid waste contracts were in place as the contracts potentially affected each other. The new solid waste contracts support the efforts of the MCSWMA recycling program. City staff supports the amended recycling agreement. However, it is likely to be less lucrative due to reinvestment into the program, but also adds flexibility to the program. The city needs to execute the new agreement to remain eligible for the rebate program. Fiscal effect: The city will be eligible for the MCSWMA recycling rebate program. Actual fiscal effect is unknown, but is estimated that the program will provide one thousand five hundred dollars annual revenue. Recommendation: Authorize the city manager to execute the authority municipality recycling agreement with the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this? Commissioner Baldini?
I would like to move to suspend the rules to have some discussion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, that's six zero. We will suspend the rules. Commissioner Baldini?
Well, I and the reason I I asked to suspend the rules to discuss this is because we we received this obviously from the city and sent forth. But the memo, I mean, I think I was taken by surprise that we're not going to recycle glass or glass bottles. And the memo from the the Solid Waste Management Authority was actioned. They took on October eighteenth, just a week ago, and the memo to us was dated October nineteenth. We have made a real effort to recycle in this community, and we just went through a very lengthy process of renewing our contract for garbage. Now, this is this is not with waste management. This is with the Solid Waste Management Authority Board, so there there's a distinction there. But I I would like to hear from our staff or the city manager what's going on, what what it is and so on and so forth, if possible.
Okay, city manager, you want to? Sure, I'll start the conversation and Scott Kembensey can can follow up. Originally, this, we have a, we've had a contract like this with the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority for for some time now. And it was up, I don't recall if it was up for renewal or if it was just up to be changed. But back in January, as a matter of background, we received a request to renew the contract for recycling. I did not bring that forward to the commission at the time because of the process we were going through in selecting a a future waste hauler. And I didn't want to commit us to a recycling contract with Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority if in fact we weren't going to be able to do that. And so once the, incidentally, that original renewal included glass as one of the items that was going to be recycled. It's also my understanding, though, that they have been, the Solid Waste Authority has been contemplating the recycling of glass for some time. Scott can add a few more details, and I'd like to mention that Brad Austin and Randy Yell are also here from the authority to answer any questions. After the action of the eighteenth by the managed by the Solid Waste Authority, they asked us again to consider renewing the contract, and that's what you see in front of you today. It has been reviewed reviewed and I believe modified some a little bit by the city attorney. And it is what it is. But Scott, anything you can add to that?
I I think that pretty much sums it up. Glass has been one topic as far as solid waste goes that we've discussed as long as I've been with the city. It's it's not a commodity with a real great return. And in most cases, you're actually paying to handle glass. Typically, there's, whether it's the landfill or recycling companies or whatever, they've they've tried to find various different uses for recycled glass, whether it's been putting it back in roadways or using it for filtering material or in in some cases, using it as a abrasive material. But all of those have been costly to do. It's a relatively inert material. It doesn't really have a lot of adverse effects dealing with it once it's in the ground. So it it has been a a topic even, you know, going back several contracts with our hauler. It was suggested that that we stop accepting glass. And at the time, we had the discussion and it was decided that we were going to keep recycling glass. So that has been part of the hauler's contract since that time. I think that pretty much sums it up. I don't know if city manager mentioned or not, but even the the recycling agreement that was in place with the landfill authority had a provision in there that the landfill authority has the right to determine which materials they accept for recycling. And in addition, there is, you know, a clause in there as far as whether or not they charged for any type of tipping fee. in there as far as whether or not they charged for any type of tipping fee bringing recycling to the landfill currently. And as long as I've been working with the solid waste, there has been no tipping fee on the recycling.
I guess maybe one other thing, Scott, is there, or maybe Brad or Randy, if recycling is, or if glass is taken out, is there an alternative available to the community for glass, either through Waste Management or some other means?
Well, at this time, the single stream recycling, which is everything mixed together that's at the drop-off points, those would still be able to take in glass if people wanted to bring glass to the drop-off point. Really, where it would eliminate it from is all the dual-stream material that's, you know, your curbside collection. All that would, glass would have to be removed from that.
And the drop-off points would be at the Waste Management location?
That's the current drop-off site. We're looking at adding a second one here in the spring.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, again, just to let people know, we just kind of read this in our notes, but we were surprised as well. This is nothing against Waste Management. I mean, we had a big battle with garbage fees and we chose to go with Waste Management. And they offer single-stream recycling at their shop. And so, if this gets, if this goes through and we can't do glass anymore at the landfill, you could still bring it to Waste Management and they ship it off or have Eagle Waste out of West Iron River, Wisconsin, come pick it up for them. So, everything that goes through Waste Management goes to the landfill, goes to their shop, not to landfill. So, this is only the stuff you put on the curb. Now, most things nowadays is plastic, not glass, but there's still a lot of glass out there. And I think it's, it was shocking to me too, as I met with some of the commissioners for considering this stuff. I was shocked too. I'm like, okay, plastic and glass is part of recycling. So, I was disappointed too when I saw that. Especially in the other company, we had a chance to choose, willing to work with our local landfill agency to help them with the recycling program maybe so. But anyway, like, nothing against Waste Management. They still offer recycling at their shop, drop-off point. And like Scott said, we may offer another place possibly in the spring, maybe at the new DPW or somewhere else. But again, just disappointed to hear.
Commissioner Conley?
We just discussed street-side pickup and waste hauling. And as part of that conversation, we discussed recycling. We had deliberated at work sessions and at an open, at a city commission meeting. And the landfill authority was part of this. They encouraged us to stay local. I was an advocate of staying local because it would have helped build the recycling program. They showed their single stream or their separation machine that, and gave us the impression that we were going to go single stream here. Not once did we hear that glass was going to be taken out of the recycling program. Not once. Eagle, who was the competitor to Waste Management, this has nothing to do with Waste Management. They're going to help us out a little bit by taking our glass. But Eagle was going to take our glass in a single stream. And it turns out, as we read this memo, that the landfill authority has been considering taking glass out of the stream for a year. We didn't hear it once. I believe that's bad faith. That fact was material to my decision to stay local. And I would have gone with Eagle had I known that the landfill authority was going to remove glass from the stream here. I'm going to vote against this.
Commissioner Plard?
As Commissioner Conley says, we had a lot of discussions. We had work sessions and we talked to the three companies that wanted our contract. And a couple of facts of life really came clear to me in all that discussion. One of those is Waste Management and recycling is a business. I think we all knew that, but I don't think it became as clear until we did the work sessions. And in fact, it is a business. Another thing that's a fact of life that became clear to me that I didn't realize was that recycling is not a lucrative business. It's just, it's something that we want. In our household, we've been recycling since the beginning. We continue to recycle. We like the idea of recycling. A lot of people like the idea of recycling. I would love to be able to recycle glass or, and all the other things. In fact, I'd like, I'd like, to be honest with you, I'd like to be able to recycle all of my garbage, all the waste that our household generates. But recycling is unfortunately, and I really do believe this is unfortunate, it's not as progressive as we want to believe it is. There's not much of a market for glass. That's one of the things we found out in the work session. There's not much of a market for other recyclables. I still am going to continue to recycle, but this did not surprise me because of that, the information that we got in the work sessions, that it just, you know, people want to recycle, but it's just not that lucrative a business. The people that wanted the contract for the city of Marquette said, "Yes, we will recycle because you guys do that." So, we put that in that as part of it. There are many communities all around the state and all around the country that simply do not recycle, and that's the reason why. It's not a lucrative business. Be that as it may, you know, I don't want to add any more to the landfill than we absolutely have to. I would love that, the idea that recycling would be worth a lot more than it really is. But the fact simply remains, it's just not. One of the things that I did here also in the work sessions is that paper, cardboard is probably the most valuable recyclables. The other, plastic maybe. You know, glass certainly was at the bottom of the list, and that came out last summer. So, again, this did not surprise me. Another thing that is a fact of life that I think the city understands and the Waste Management or the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority understands is that, again, people like to recycle and glass, as has been stated, is considered to be part of what could be or should be recycled in people's minds. We may get to a point now where we have to change that thought a little bit. Do I want to throw away and put glass into the landfill? No, I don't. I would love to be able to find a way to really recycle glass. And again, a lot of things that we don't recycle now and find a better way to recycle some of the things we do recycle. But I think this is just, this is just part of the progress. It's just what happens. When we started out recycling, we thought, you know, we didn't know a lot about it. None of us did. And we thought, well, we'd find out as we moved along. Well, we're finding out as we move along. This can work, this can work. This doesn't work so well. That's what I see this to be. So, based on that, I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Personally, I'm a little disappointed in this decision to exclude glass. The reason I voted for Waste Management is the pickup people is because this was going to help the county landfill keep their recycling process going. It wasn't perhaps the best offer, but the fact that it encouraged recycling throughout the county was important to me. Now I find out that they're not taking glass. This is after we've got people trained to start recycling. And we've got, you know, and we want to expand on recycling. Dual-stream is working now, but that's not the way to go. We need to get to a single-stream recycling. How you're going to do it, if you're going to do it, you said you're going to try to do it. I want to, I'm going to ask you later what your plans are to get to that point. The fact that we cannot recycle glass tells me that residents are going to end up paying more because if they got one full bag, but now they got a whole bag of bottles, that's another extra bag. They're paying more. Now, it's small, but it's going to add up. It's not fair to the residents. They are going to be paying more. Then Waste Management hauls it to the landfill. They're dumping more tonnage into the landfill. They're paying more in cost. So, the question, the next question I have is who's paying for that cost? Is it the city or does Waste Management eat it? That's the second question. As far, I'm glad you're going to have a drop-off. I mean, we've got to have a recycling program. You say that we can bring bottles to Waste Management at another spot. That's all good. But you know what? We shouldn't have to get in our cars and go down there and do that because all do it. Most people do it. Not most, a lot will, but a lot won't. And consequently, it's going to all go in the landfill. And I think we're going backwards on this. We should be going forwards. We should be doing a better job of recycling. We should be doing other things other than bottles, plastics. My next, another question is, are you going to, I know plastics isn't making you any money. Are you going to cut that out? I would hope you don't. So, could I get an answer to the first question? Can I ask Mr. Austin? Could you come to the podium and answer that?
Good evening, Commissioners Brad Austin, Director, Marquette County Landfill, 120 Woodland Drive, Nagani. First question, there's a lot of questions and I'd be glad to answer anything that I can for you tonight.
Who's paying, who's paying for the extra tonnage that goes into the landfill? Waste Management or the city? Who gets the bill?
Well, the...
Instead of 10 tons?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Waste Management has an agreement with the, contract with the city. So, we bill the constituent municipality from the authority. So, if the resident places glass in a green bag and it comes across the scale, it's going into the landfill as tonnage and should be assessed a tipping fee. Currently, that glass right now is going into the landfill. The difference is, is we're separating it out of the dual-stream system and we're hauling it into the landfill and we're dumping it into landfill and it's being used as a drainage substitute. Essentially, it's sand. As Scott alluded to, it's an inert material. It's not producing any landfill gas. From an environmental standpoint, it's not harming anything. But to answer your question, it would be tonnage that would be coming across the scale as a solid waste and would be assessed the tipping fee. Yes?
So, the city is paying for this?
Yes.
Extra?
They're paying for it. It's tonnage. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. How much? I don't know. You probably don't know. Depends how much comes across. I just, we have to know this.
Understand. And if I could, just to the first point and Commissioner Baldini, the timeline, and I guess along with that, maybe can answer some questions along the way. We have been evaluating it for about 12 months. In March of 17, we put new equipment online. Okay? At that point in time, we were evaluating the dual-stream paper and the rigid materials that were coming in. In May of 2017, I came to a Marquette city work session, unveiled the new equipment. In June of 2017, we sent some loads to Delta County and Escanaba. We got a little partnership with Don Pyle and Delta County Solid Waste. They have better separation equipment than we do. We wanted to split the material out and see what we had. What were the fractions of this material and what were the impacts on the quality? What came back from that in August was that out of a 37,000, 37,000 pound load or an 18-ton load, eight tons of that material was glass. Okay? That's a substantial amount of contamination in the material. September of 2017, I introduced to the board discussions of glass removal from the dual-stream system. And then October, I wrote a recommendation and subsequently furnished a letter to the constituents after the board passed the removal of the material. It's a dynamic industry, as Commissioner Plard alluded to. There are a lot of things that are happening right now overseas that impact what we can and can't do. And the reality of it is, is that we have to be able to put things to market. There is a value in landfill diversion, absolutely, 100%. But we can't spend money to separate something that we can't sell or put to market. And part of this is the reality of where we are, our location. We're six hours away from Chicago and putting glass in the back of a trailer that has to be clean and sorted by color in order to market it. The cost-benefit analysis, it doesn't add up. It doesn't make sense. So, although it's disappointing that we have to take it out of the stream or remove it from the stream, from a cost perspective, it doesn't make sense. And to the point about plastics, and that was mentioned, right now overseas in China, where most of the off-spec plastic goes, that would be your number three through number seven materials, yogurt cups, butter dishes, things like that. They're talking about banning imports at the end of the year. That means that those materials are going to flood the U.S. market. And there will be no place for those materials to go. There's already cities in our region, Madison, Wisconsin, who are banning certain things from the curbside recycling bin because there's no market for the material. It's a terrible reality. And what has come from these laws in China back in 2013, the Green Fence and now Operation Sword, is they are tired of being what they call the world's garbage dump. They're receiving a lot of loads that have contamination. So, they're enforcing laws that have been in place since 2013. And it has a ripple effect to the United States and what we do. Currently, right now, there's two pieces of plastic that are worth something, to be honest. A number one plastic, which is a water bottle, in front of Commissioner Plard, and a number two natural, which is a milk jug, or a two-colored, which would be your Tide bottle, those type of things. Those are the only things right now that are bringing anything back on market. Delta County, one hour away from us right now, accepts one and two plastic. They accept metal. They accept cardboard and mixed paper. Those are the only things that they accept in their recycling program. Now, the authority has looked at several options for other alternatives to these plastic materials, what we call off-spec, three through seven. We've talked about potentially grinding those materials, re-grinding them, make pellets, put those things directly to market. Ford Motor Company uses some of these products. There's industries that need it. But there's infrastructure that you have to invest in in order to make that pellet. And the question here is, is there enough volume in this county to justify that capital expenditure to do it? And those are the things that we've been exploring for the past 12 to 18 months. You know, I've been on this job for about two years. I've been handed some things. And I'm now coming back and I'm addressing them. And we have to do things cost-effectively. Recycling has to be ran somewhat as a business. If there's no market for that material, there's not a whole lot that we can do with it. And we're spending money to process it. And we don't have a place to send it. And as you all know, there's no tipping fees for recycling. So, we rely on market returns to invest into our program, our people, our infrastructure. So, we're limited to a certain extent, not to mention, it is a volume-based program. We don't have a lot of volume in the county of Marquette. So, to the question of glass, it's probably about 5% of an individual's waste stream per year. And I would say this, I'd like to focus the efforts on getting the neighbor to the left and to the right of folks in the community participating in the program on what we can recycle. Because those volumes will far outweigh what we put in the landfill as glass. They'll far outweigh it. Right now, on an average in this county, we're at about a 12 to 15% participation rate in this program. If we capture more materials that we can recycle, we'll be better off. And we'll be diverting far more from the landfill, well beyond what we'd be putting in, in glass.
Commissioner Baldini?
Quick question. So, are you saying that for the past year, we've really been paying for the glass?
Yes. Not through tipping fees.
Pardon me?
Through operating costs.
Through operating costs?
Yes.
In other words, you've counted it as just sort of garbage, not recyclables?
It's not.
So, it's been added to our tonnage?
It goes into, no, it hasn't been added to your tonnage. It's an operating cost that we have in the processing. So, there's been no tipping fees added to it. It was a recyclable item that we were taking in and we were processing. And as we put new equipment online in March of 2017, we started to see it and recognize it more that it was not viable to continue to process it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
So, you're saying that about 5%, excuse me, 5% of the tipping fees is glass? Or, I mean, 5% of our waste, overall waste is glass? Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I'm saying an individual resident, per capita, per household, a resident per year, about 5% of what they produce is glass.
So, you just raised our price 5% is what you're saying? Because now you're going to charge us that 5%. We considered the contract. We went with the more expensive, the Waste Management, this has nothing to do with them, but we had faith. We took what you told us in good faith. You told us about all your wonderful recycling and never once mentioned glass to us, never once. Now, we signed the contract, three weeks later, our price goes up 5%. We didn't know it. I would have voted for Eagle if I would have known what you guys were doing. And you say 12 to 18 months? And you say 12 to 18 months? I've known about this since Friday. You didn't say it. This is bad faith negotiation.
I, I understand, Commissioner. As I said, we put the new equipment online in March of 2017 and that's when we started to look at it and we could, we seen what the impacts were.
Started talking to you in June. That's when we had our work session. You never said a word. You showed us the brand-new machine. Oh, we're gonna do everything. We're gonna, we're gonna increase this program. Our costs are gonna go down. You're gonna get a bigger check and, and, and. Now, you say, well, the side contracts signed, you're going up 5% because we're gonna start charging you for that glass. I vote no.
Are you gonna continue to have containers, I know it's not your call, at Waste Management and at other points forever and ever to collect glass? So that we have a place to dispose the glass? If we wanna, if, if people want to recycle?
Certainly. And Waste Management does have drop-offs right now. And if the city wanted more drops, drop-offs, I'm sure that, that Waste Management would accommodate that if they wanted alternative places for residents to drop glass.
The more that goes into their bins that they can, well, they gotta haul it away, but they don't have to bring it to the dump, so consequently, they don't pay the tipping fee or the increased cost to that drop-off. I'm just thinking, sorry. Let me ask you this. What is the landfill gonna do as far as getting towards a single stream process? Are you really working towards it or not?
Yes, we are. And the glass removal from the system is part of the process. The single stream recycling will mix the rigid or the plastic containers with the fiber materials. The fiber materials that are contaminated by glass won't be worth as much or won't be worth anything. Glass, broken glass, mixed in with single stream recycling, that's pushed into the fiber, that's baled together, that will be considered a contaminant. Quality moving forward in the markets is critical and glass is a contaminant.
What about plastic? What if you have plastic and fiber?
There's a certain percentage of all throws that are allowed. Currently, right now, it's at 5% at the mill. So, you can have a certain percentage of contamination in the bail, whether it's trash or other items.
Commissioner Frazier?
It's unfortunate that it's just coming out of this all of a sudden. And, but I understand recycling is expensive because we used to recycle, I'm in the concrete industry. We used to recycle concrete with a machine that took some of the cement and the paste out of it and just spit the rock and sand out as gravel. That was very valuable material. We used it as road gravel. I put my driveway down. It worked out great. Everybody liked it. But then, the machine was expensive, hard to maintain, and we had a hard time finding the byproduct. Some farmers used it. We had hard, but I understand trying to find somebody who used it, the material was hard. I understand that. It's not easy. I mean, there's companies that can do anything, you know. Sometimes companies have to pay more to get their product. I mean, with everything, we, we pay a lot of money to get all the rock and sand to make everything. You know, it's just the way it works. But unfortunately, you know, it just comes down to, maybe you could talk to somebody like Eagle or some other recycling facility and say, okay, who do you sell your glass to? And is there a market, would that company be willing to buy some from you or something like that? Is there somebody else out there? I know there's companies that, that sell glass and use crushed glass for decorative stuff. But is there, maybe you guys can look at it over the winter. Okay, what are there facilities out there that might be willing to buy the glass or take the glass or something? You know, I know you have to make some money for crushing the glass, I know. But maybe there's somebody else out there that can do it. Who knows, but...
Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Well, I, I understand my fellow commissioners' concerns with this. Could you talk a little more about, it looks like it's actually gonna be a $1,500 revenue addition to the city? Is that just for a year or is that?
That was an average rebate per year for the city based on the tonnages that was coming in. However, that rebate will change if glass comes out. Glass was part of that tonnage coming in. So, that certainly has an impact on the rebate to the city along with the other constituent municipalities that are in the program, absolutely.
Okay, so, the glass comes out and then it's less money back to us?
That's correct. The rebate is based on delivered tons to the landfill. Delivered recyclable tons to the landfill.
I mean, we can't, we can't make a product more recyclable. I understand the bottom line is that it, it does cost our residents more and that's what most of us are concerned about. Are there any solutions or would it be advantageous for all of us to sit down at a work session to talk about this before signing it? Or is this just the black and white reality, I guess, of what we have to work with?
Well, I, I made a recommendation to the board to remove glass from the dual stream recycling program. And the board approved that. And I, in turn, sent the letter to the constituent municipalities in regards to glass removal effective the 1st of January. We are always looking for alternative markets for material. We did with glass. Matter of fact, concrete was one of the places we went. Could we mix it in with the, the mix? Unfortunately, from a sustainability standpoint, there were some issues. We've looked at other options. Right now, currently, Dearborn is one of the closest places that we have that we could do something with it. There's other places in other states. But in order to get it to a state where you can market that material clean and by color, it's, it's very difficult. And by the time you do that, you're not there from a cost perspective.
I have an additional question.
Commissioner Baldini, yes?
Have other municipalities signed this agreement? Are we the only one quote hanging out there?
Right now, as far as the recycling agreement, yes. Marquette City is the only one that has not signed on it.
So, okay, I, what, what?
All the others have.
All the others have. However, the glass ban will become effective the 1st of January and that document with the other constituent municipalities will be revised.
So, what choice do we have this evening? The, the, the authority of which we're one of the members, we're not the authority, we're one of the members. Where do we, I mean, if we say no, your authority can say, this is what we're gonna do, so we're, that's what we're confronted with. If we say yes, then it moves on. But I, I think you get a sense here, listening to Commissioner Plort, not listening, but yeah, listening to him. I think he articulates probably what people in this community. We know recycling does cost something, but we were willing to do that. I think the cost is gonna come back to our city budget because if I use a bag or I use the container, that's not necessarily gonna affect my monthly fee on the bill. It's gonna affect the city's overall bill. So, I, I, I don't know if we, if I like the position we're in. We're in a no-win position at this point, yeah.
Commissioner Conley?
So, I, I'm, he's still trying to figure out because you don't always tell us what you mean. I think I just heard that we're not only gonna get charged an additional 5% for our glass, but you're gonna reduce our rebate less than the $1,500. So, there's less revenue. And the $1,500 is less revenue that we've gotten in the past for recycling. I get that. But now you're taking that 15 and reducing it for there. It's not a lot of money when you're looking at a city budget. But, come on, let's just, can we just tell the truth for once? I mean, you're dealing with a commission that helped you out of the flink farm situation, if we can go back and recall that. So, I kinda got to a place where I thought, maybe we had a new relationship. And then you don't tell us about the glass recycling. We make a decision for more expensive recycling. And then all of a sudden, we sign it and you say, well, your rebate's less and we're gonna charge you more and we're not gonna recycle the glass. And your citizen's gonna have to take another trip to the, to the Waste Management if they want to recycle glass. So, I'm just having, what, what is our choice? I'd like to find out by voting no. And I'd encourage my fellow commissioners to vote no tonight and see where it takes us. Because I'm tired of this.
Brad, I have to ask, because I missed it. How are we losing money if you're getting rid of a money-losing proposition like glass? You're taking glass which you're losing money on, you said, right? You take, you're not gonna, if you don't accept glass anymore?
Right.
How come the rebate goes down?
Because the rebate is based on delivered tons of recyclables.
Delivered tons to the landfill? Not which you sell to the?
No, it's based on delivered tons to the landfill.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Maybe with, you know, fortunately, we're beating you up with this glass thing, it's unfortunate, you know. I'd like to know, like Commissioner Conley, like alternatives, you know. Maybe a Waste Management hauls it back to their, to their shop or some other place and then somebody else comes and picks up the recycling, hauls it somewhere else. I don't know what the process is. If we don't sign this and we don't bring recycling to you, I know we're one of the biggest recyclers around. Does that hurt the landfill? But also, we wanna encourage recycling. So, you're still encouraging recycling, just not glass, which is unfortunate. I know most of the stuff is plastic, but still occasional glass. I know when there's fundraisers, a ton of wine bottles or something like that, you know, five or 10, you know, at least. So, that's a lot of tonnage. But, you know, it's, we have to look at alternatives. Maybe Waste Management could come to the meeting with you and say, okay, if you don't want to bring it to their, their landfill, we could haul it back to, so, you know, they pay Eagle or Eagle pays, I don't know, somebody comes in and trucks stuff away. I know there's a business. We used to get products from Green Bay. And then the company we got our products said, okay, you have to get it from Detroit. So, we had to find a trucker to go all the way to Detroit to pick up the stuff. Do we charge people extra? Well, maybe we raised the price on everything like a buck, but it was expensive for us to go all the way to Detroit versus Green Bay. But in the process, we found two or three other companies we could work with downstate to pick up products. So, we have a great trucker that said, you know, okay, I'll haul this, I'll backhaul the stuff for you back to Marquette. Maybe there's a trucker out there that you could throw those glass recyclables in someplace and he could haul it to some bin in Wisconsin or Lower Michigan or somewhere. You know, some trucker that'd be willing to, say he takes a load up here from somewhere. He'd be willing to haul it back down there. Who knows? There's processes for everything, maybe.
Mr. Ken Benzey?
Well, it just sounds like at this point, if we're looking at recycling, it's gonna go in a landfill, no matter what. So, to me, it comes down to then the cost. And if we say no to this agreement, I guess, where does that leave us? The Solid Waste Authority has made the decision they're not doing it. What is our other option then?
Could we get an answer to that? What happens if we voted no on this tonight?
I don't know if I have a clear answer. I don't know if Scott does. But I know that, you know, we have a contract with Waste Management for them to pick up our recycling. And I guess it would have to venture into a discussion with them as to what they do with it, whether they take it to the landfill or they take it somewhere else. Scott, anything?
No, there is a provision in there that, that says they will take it through the landfill because that's part of the direction we seem to be going when we were going through the contract negotiation. It does open it up for discussion with them if, for some reason, they can't go through the landfill as far as where they would take it, what the cost would be, et cetera. So, I mean, that would be opening up for discussion. While I'm on the contract, just two points to clarify. The, the drop-off sites, one being Waste Management and then the one we'll have in the spring, those are, are purely through the hauler. They're single stream. The hauler is, is taking those to areas already that accept single stream recycling. So, that's, that's totally separate than what we're dealing with going through the county landfill. The second point to clarify is, the way our contract is structured with the hauler, and it, it always has been this way, is they are responsible for paying all the tipping fees associated with what they collect curbside. So, at least for the next seven years, the solid waste hauler will be absorbing whatever that extra is for the glass, not the residents. However, the next time we go out for bid, it could cause the rates to be, or the bids to be higher because of that.
Commissioner Plort?
Brad, you mentioned 10 minutes ago. I just want to get a clarification. Only about 12% of our residents actually recycle? Did you, is that what you said?
Recycling rate roughly right now with participating municipalities is between 12 and 15%.
And that's kinda surprising to me. And I'm not disputing what you're saying in any way. But in my overall thoughts about recycling, I, I'd love to think that 90% at least of the city residents recycle. But what we're looking at is 85 to 87% of the city residents don't recycle at all regardless.
Well, well, keep in mind, Commissioner Plort, that those numbers are based on you take your solid waste numbers that you receive versus your recycling. So, it doesn't mean that people aren't participating in the program. It just means based on solid waste volume from the city of Marquette as opposed to recycling volume. That's your percentage. So, it's safe to say that more than 15% of the people in the city of Marquette and other communities are recycling. It's just the impact that they're having, which is my, my point earlier, which was focus on getting other residents within the communities to recycle the things that we can process and put to market.
Because it's not only glass that they're not recycling. Those, those who are not recycling, it's not only glass. It's plastic and paper.
Sure.
Everything else that, that's involved in recycling.
Right.
So, that we, you know, we probably do need to take a look at encouraging people to recycle a lot more of those. Because basically, they're going into the landfill now as it is.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baldini?
We are part of the Solid Waste Management Authority. We are not the Solid Waste Management Authority. We're part of it for the County of Marquette. And this motion, we have, don't have a motion, but what's being proposed here tonight is execute the authority and authorize the city manager to sign this agreement with Solid Waste Management. Even if we tonight don't sign the contract or don't agree to it, I don't, I don't know what that means, for one thing. But I do know that we're part of a larger group. We are the major contributor to the solid waste. And we pay the major portion of it also. And I'm, and I'm not asking that we play the, the heavy role in this situation because your board has made this decision, of which I'm assuming our members on that board voted for this also. Is that true? I think it was unanimous decision. I, I...
Can I say something? Yes, to the podium, please.
You can stay here.
I'm not.
Oh, okay.
The, the board looked at this, the 22 minutes...
Randy, tell us who you are.
Oh, Randy L. Sands Township. I'm the chairman of the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority Management Board. It came to us and we looked at the issues of the all 23 municipalities which we have now being that the county is now a board. And it, it's costing you guys for us to, to have to separate all this stuff, pull the glass out of the, of the plastic bottles that we do and then we end up throwing it back in the landfill anyway, of which it's, so it's actually costing you something because eventually, if the recycling program isn't serving, isn't paying for itself and we have to spend all this time getting the glass out of there, getting it in the landfill, we live by the tipping fees of the solid waste. And that's what we talked about. You know, if, if all of a sudden, this recycling program isn't supporting itself and how many, how many ton did we have to take out of there? Eight, was it 6,000 ton of glass we separated out of the recycling?
The load estimate was eight ton.
Eight ton? Okay. And so, we're spending time doing this. We're spending manpower and equipment to do this and we're not getting anything for it, period. Nothing, absolutely nothing. So, we looked at the fact that, okay, fine, we're doing this. Recycling, we don't charge for recycling. We pay a rebate at, at the end, which isn't a whole lot. It's a very small amount. It's not gonna put you over the top or anything like that. But in the, in the long run of it, we're putting this glass in there, we're working to separate... But in the, in the long run of it, we're putting this glass in there, we're working to separate it, we're having to clean it up. We get, we're having, uh, plastics that's getting contaminated with the glass, so that goes into the landfill. We've got manpower doing that, and we're not getting anything for it. Well, absolutely nothing. So if the recycling program don't pay for itself, then where do we get the money? We get our money from the tipping fees of the solid waste.
Commissioner Baldini?
What, what I don't like, I suppose, with my colleagues about this is, uh, you know, you've got logic on your side on this one in terms of money.
And that, that's why we did this.
Yeah, but, uh, we had a company in front of us who proposed to take all of our recyclables with them to Wisconsin. Okay? Uh, that decision's done, that contract is signed. So I'm probably gonna vote for this, uh, if we get two people here to agree on this motion. Um, or a majority tonight. I'm probably gonna vote for it because, uh, we're part of the Solid Waste Management. It was, it was a decision the Solid Waste Management Authority made. Uh, I think we made a decision earlier in the year with our garbage decision to really stick with sort of the locals, because we wanted to help the solid waste. And I also, I do understand, because I've been reading more on recyclables, and it's not as lucrative a market as people make it out to be. Uh, but at the same time, as Commissioner Plod has said, uh, there are people who are saying, yeah, but we're prepared to pay for it maybe a little more. And I don't know what that little more means. So, um, uh, I, I'm prepared to support a motion, uh, reluctantly. But I, I would like to see some extensive discussion, uh, in the next, I don't know how we do that, in the next six, eight months, to talk about this issue of, uh, the, the solid waste management recyclables. But maybe there's nothing you can do. And we are, we do have a geography problem, and we are very aware of that, so. But, uh, so, uh, thank you.
And as, as long as I'm the chairman, I mean, if, if we get a, a place where we can get rid of glass, we'll come back to you and say, hey, glass is back in. Absolutely. It's just right now, it's costing the municipalities to be taking glass, and we're throwing it into the landfill anyway, irregardless. And we're spending time on it. So, I mean, if, if, if something comes up that we can take glass, we'll definitely do it. We'll change that just as quick. The board, we feel very confident that we did the best for the authority as a whole by taking glass out at this point with the, with the, what was proposed to us and given to us this last month. Thank you.
Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Yeah, I, I, this is a tough one, um, because the contracts sign, and, I mean, the difficult part is I know the other municipalities, townships also have contracts that operate on different, um, years, and they're not in sync with ours, and they use even different, um, haulers. So I guess I'd like to see more conversation, but at this point, I, I really don't think there's an alternative. The alternative or the solution going forward would be to talk more to our neighbors, um, see if we can get more people to recycle, and, you know, hopefully, kind of bring awareness that, um, you know, even if we haul it, there's a good chance it's probably going in the landfill, um, if the market's not there. So I, I don't, I don't like the answer. I don't like, um, the position we're in. But at this point, I think we have to go forward and find a solution and, you know, not abandon, um, our Solid Waste Authority and work with them. Because there's no market. I mean, it comes down to the fact that there's no market. So, um, I'm willing to support this tonight and work through it as well.
All right, can we have a motion on this, please? Uh, Commissioner Baldini?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute the authority municipality recycling agreement with the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority.
Do you have a second, Commissioner Plod?
I second.
Discussion any?
I, I think we've had a lot of discussion. Oh, go ahead. Attorney.
I don't normally input myself into your decisions here, but I did want to point out that in paragraph six of this agreement, you have the right to terminate this contract on 60 days' notice at any point that the contract's in place.
Thank you. Um, I, I, we, we've had some discussion here, and I, I, I've listened to Commissioner Conley talk, who, who probably expressed our frustration rather articulately. And, um, and at the same time, I, I feel we're in a predicament here. And I, I would hope that, not hope, I, I think that we as a commission have to have this discussion with our members on this, on the Solid Waste Authority and with the solid waste, to see where we're going. I mean, the picture you paint with regards to recycling is not a, a real positive one, and that's not your fault, okay? That's, that's the fault more of what's going on in our geography and in the country. So I, I'm gonna vote for this at this point, but I, I would hope that we as a commission, uh, and I'm gonna be one to raise the issue, to bring it back, to see what we can do to, uh, to get more recycling by the broader population, and also to see what we can do with, with these other issues. So, thank you.
Commissioner Plod?
I also understand Commissioner Conley's frustration, and I don't disagree with it. Uh, it's, it's, it's a interesting development, uh, but it's not surprising. I, I don't think it should be surprising. Again, during the work sessions, I, I, when you showed us the new equipment, I, I heard the same thing. Glass is not, you told us straight out, glass is not marketable. Uh, probably would have to do something with glass. That's why this is not a surprise to me. Uh, and I, and I think that we have to realize too, that as Commissioner Cam Benzie said, uh, there's, you know, there's just no market. Uh, we have to realize that other recyclables or things we consider to be recyclable probably will fall under this again as well. Uh, I appreciate the authority saying that, yes, that, you know, if something does shake, shake loose, something changes, uh, for our benefit, that they'll come back and let us know, and I, I trust them for that. I think, uh, Scott Cam Benzie's got a good line on it, and he's, he's watching it pretty well for the city as far as that goes. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate in a sense, but in another sense, um, I think we are beha, between a rock and a hard place. It's something we do have to do, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Baldini, that we do not abandon the county, uh, Marquette County Solid Waste Authority. Uh, so I think at this point, right now, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I think we, we have to, we have to agree with it.
Commissioner Frazier?
I think it's disappointing. I mean, what does it have to have a little bin? I mean, not nice thing with Waste Management, it was the bins. Put most recycling in the big bins, so I may have more room, the recyclable containers I have now, I could fill those up with glass and just haul it to Waste Management when I'm running that way. It's unfortunate I may have to do it, but I'm big into recycling, and I support recycling. And we're gonna, you know, strive to get everybody recycling more to hopefully help us out. But being as unfortunate, just part of it, but, you know, it's, but I think hopefully we'll get your board and the city will just talk and figure something out, so hopefully.
I just want to say myself, I'm not happy, I'm disappointed with the choice we have to make here. I think that recycling is going backwards with this decision, but we have no choice. The glass is gonna go in the landfill. There's not much we can do. Maybe look at it in 60, six months to a year. So, Commissioner Cam Benzie?
If I could just add, I, I mean, I kind of have a, I don't know, maybe there's a more hopeful outlook that, um, you know, maybe we work a little bit with Waste Management and, you know, just see if they have any other options too. I mean, I, you never know. I, I think right now, um, there's a lot more discussion to be had, and, um, I guess I'm trying to look at it as glass could be half-full if we keep working at it.
Seeing no further comment. We're gonna vote on this. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
I believe it's, just do a roll call, vote, please, city clerk.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cam Benzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
No.
Commissioner Frazier?
No.
Commissioner Plod?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana?
Yes. That passes four to two. Brad, thank you. Mr. Austin, thank you. Mr. Yell, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to our last new business item of the evening, which is a smart zone agreement addendum. City clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC, has developed a reporting metrics requirement for all of the state's smart zones. MEDC is requiring this reporting to be incorporated into the smart zone agreements as an addendum. This is a three-way agreement between the city of Marquette, the city of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority, the LDFA, and the MEDC. The LDFA approved the addendum at its October 16th regular meeting. Should the city commission approve the addendum, the signed document will be sent to the MEDC for their signature. Fiscal effect: if approved, there will be no fiscal effect. If not approved, the LDFA tax capture of the state's portion will no longer be able to be captured for use for the smart zone. Recommendation: authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the attached addendum to the smart zone agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner Baldini?
Uh, I move that we authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the attached addendum to the smart zone agreement.
So second, Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any comment, Commissioner Baldini?
Not much to say. This is an agreement we, we knew was, we, we did before, and we're doing it again. It's just a bookkeeping one, important bookkeeping one, but, okay.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
Good, give the smart zone going.
Seeing no further comment? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Passes six-zero. We come to our last public comment of the evening, and again, a chance for residents to address the commission. Got three minutes. We need your name, address, city or township. I'm gonna open this public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're gonna, oh, we do have someone.
Fastest we've ever been with that.
You're sitting down.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. Well, Miss Ms. Reynolds, despite her lack of participation, however, on April 25, 2016, she accused me of mistreating someone's wife. The record shows I didn't say anything derogatory. Ms. Reynolds' apology remains forthcoming for assuming I'd said the worst. October 10th, Mr. Plod interrupted a man at 28:45, claiming the comment didn't pertain to the item. The chair said Mr. Plod was correct, when in fact, the comment was germane in that it cited this board for mishandling that item. After the meeting, I wrote an attorney, quote, "A citizen spoke to an agenda item mentioning the way the item had been added to the agenda that night. He was cut off because the CC didn't feel this pertained to the item. My feeling has always been that the handling or mishandling of an item becomes part of the history of that item, thus is pertinent while addressing the CC on that particular item. Do they have the right to cut citizens off, claiming it doesn't pertain to the matter at hand?" He replied, "I think procedure is important and pertains to the item and is fair comment, and I do not believe cutting off a critic is appropriate," end quote. Ms. Reynolds also agreed. "The mishandling of an item becomes part of that item. We've crossed this road before. You've also been warned not to add items at meeting time, usually items that were foreseeable or that could have waited for the next meeting, a recurring error. As Mr. Stonehouse said, we need the full commission, full warning, do it correctly. He sounded more like me than himself, yet you ignored us both. You've been advised to consult our attorney, whom we pay to attend, while you continue to flounder, because Mr. Plod read the rules as they subjectively apply to him. The most dangerous man is one who comes across like he knows anything by smooth-talking an audience. Note what you're doing before you cut someone off. It will be run by an attorney, and if he recommends a lawsuit, we will pursue justice. You're advised again, use our attorney, who is urged to speak up when this board is committing a possible violation. That's part of why an attorney is present. Mr. Plod's a professional talker, not an attorney. He and the chair excel at responding to what this board cannot do, instead of addressing the majority of our comments that are within this board's purview, like homelessness and aforementioned items that affect most everyone but them evidently. The chair was asked to explain why the number of years he's been here, or how I pronounce flounders, are more important. Both utterances intended to divert public attention from the allegations. Please remove Mr. Campana from that chair. He is the least mayoral, least qualified, and one of the most unpublic-minded chairman we've seen in 20 years. Try Mr. Baldini out. At least he has qualifications and looks mayoral."
That's the best one yet, Frank, it really is.
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Orianna. I don't know how I can follow that.
He's better looking.
A couple of quick comments. It was asked how high Lake Superior is. We are three inches below the historic high, which was back in 1985, so three inches to go. Typically, in the fall of the year, the lake levels drop, and that has not been happening this year. They've been holding steady or continuing slightly increased. So, uh, we can expect high water certainly for the foreseeable future. Commends city staff and what they did on the, uh, the great storm that we had. Uh, certainly good initial moves being done to fix the things that immediately have to be fixed. But this is also a case of the glass half-empty and half-full. The half-full of it being, it really is a remarkable opportunity to fix Lake Shore Boulevard for once the right way. And to use this as a segue into some of the money out of the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, to be able to move that road, fix it the way it is, and not just haul more garbage rock on it, like some commission did 40 years ago. And we've been living with that unsightly mess ever since. So let's try and figure out a way of putting a full court press on the feds to crack into some of that $325 million, I think, that was there last year and ostensibly would be there again this year, uh, to be able to get that particular problem area fixed, fixed the right way, and fix it once. Because otherwise, it's gonna be with us forever, and we're never gonna be able to solve it. So, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Have a good evening.
Anyone else?
And lady.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna go to comments from the commission. We're gonna start with Commissioner Cam Benzie.
Well, thank you. The only, um, suggestion I heard from a community member about, um, you know, possibly warning residents or visitors to our city during storms like that, would there be, um, some sort of a flashing light that we could display, um, certainly at Presque Isle or something, to just warn of this with a, a sign? I mean, I think, we hope everyone would use common sense, um, but knowing, knowing that there were two drownings, it's certainly hard for our community to go through, and, um, hopefully, we'll look at it. Anything we could do to help, help with that? I'd just like to commend all of, all of our city employees, certainly the BLP, and the surrounding communities for helping out. I know there were a lot of, uh, people, I saw the Nagani, um, their electric company was in town. So I, I know that they were pulling from all directions, and I just want to thank them for that. And lastly, I, I do hope, um, Frank Jeff, that you could have a little more respect to Mayor Campana. I think he's a great man, he's a good leader. Um, we all voted him in this position, and, uh, I'd like to see you work with him, um, a little more going forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Wild time in the city this, this week with, uh, all the storms, and I've worked around the lake my whole life. And like I said years ago, we were complaining there wasn't enough water. Like I said, my side business, besides being city staff, city commissioner is hauling boats in and out and putting them back in the water. We used to have problems with pulling boats out of the water, not enough water, and now we don't have that problem. In fact, we had a lot of up-high water at our establishment because of all the storms. You know, it's just one thing that happens, and you just learn to live with it, learn our work around it. And like Mr. Stonehouse said, the lake is way up, it's close to high level, and I've found that it's always higher in the fall and lower in the spring. I know we were ready to launch a boat in the spring. He was standing on a six-foot step ladder, and he was up to the first bottom of the step ladder. Now he'd be standing in probably two feet of water, if he was in the same spot, you know, compared to last year, but, or the, early in the spring, but whatever. First, you know, there was some discussion before about the person concerned about the fence and stuff like that. Harrison Street upgrade was a, took some time. I understand the frustration, just like everybody's frustrated with all the construction around town. It'll be nice next year when all the construction has gone away. away, but it's just part of making the city look good. I know there's talk of, during one of the forums that Mr. Baldini and I went to, asking about put more money in the budget for roads. Well, yes, we can do that, but then you look at how frustrated people are for trying to get around town with all this construction, so. But people in Harrison are very happy. I know some people live on that street. The city is just trying to put Band-Aids on it, and the mayor and I took a walk in that street, we saw a lot of people. We talked to people on that street, and they said, let's, let's just fix it right. So the city made a decision, let's fix it right, and everybody's happy. They got to do curbs, new sidewalks, the sewers are fixed, everything's good. So one less thing the city has to worry about in the future. So I think that's good. So, I mean, and, you know, that's a good idea, you know, give people warning coming to town. Maybe we could do, through Commissioner Plord's radio station or something like that, or, I mean, everybody has phones these days. You know, I know the weather app I use says, there's a Lake Shore flood warning, high winds, you know. The Coast Guard flies a flag, they have flags on all the beaches, you know, saying, but people don't understand what the flag is. They're not going to know. They should, maybe, you know, the news channels or the radios are just going to put upgrades out there saying, okay, everybody, stay away from, you know, go take pictures if you want to take pictures. My wife loves to take pictures like everybody else, but she knows not to endanger herself to take a picture, so.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. Along with Commissioner Cam Benzi, the storms on the lake are unbelievable attraction, and people are going to want to see that, because you can stand back safely to watch it. Some people haven't, and they've put themselves in jeopardy in, in our first responders. But I think maybe, you know, we did work on people going out of the breakwater, and that has stopped, and the university has done a proactive thing, and maybe we have to think about something. Maybe the light thing you're suggesting or something might actually be a way to think about it and work at it. The, I do think we have to take this on again and go aggressively after money to fix that road. It's not going to be simple, it's not cheap, but I think it's an opportunity maybe to bring in our federal and state elected officials and have that discussion, and I, I think the city manager maybe can put that together. The roundabouts are coming to a close. I was wishing it was earlier in the season, we could have had a big ceremony in town to do something. I don't know what, but I also must say that people have been very cooperative. I mean, we, we don't claim it, we blame it on the city manager, that he tore up the town this year, but people have been very, very supportive. You hear some grumbling here and there, but I think they understand it. I'm beginning to hear people say, you know, that roundabout is really effective, so it's there, and that, that's good. I do want to comment on people out walking in the morning and the evening when it's dark, especially now when we don't have snow. I've come very close, I go to the gym very early in the morning, and people walking on the road. There's no white snow, there's just darkness, and they wear dark clothes. And I really would advocate that they start wearing something that has some reflective manner to it. I mean, somebody, I almost hit somebody, and they said, well, it wouldn't have been your fault. Well, that wouldn't have made me feel any better. But I think it's something that people, we should think about when we go out walking. And I just also wanted to mention, in the new tax proposal that's being discussed in Washington, there is discussion of eliminating tax exemption on state and lower, state and local taxes. And I think we should keep an eye on that, because that could have a significant impact on, on what happens in communities across the country. And lastly, don't forget to turn your clocks back. It's the fall of the year, and we do that Saturday night, so when you go to bed Saturday night, fall back, okay, by one hour. It's, it's that time already. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Mr. Verito, if I used your so-called logic, I would conclude that you're threatening me and threatening the commission. However, I am well-versed and well-experienced in the art of threatening, and looking at you and hearing you talk, I cannot possibly conclude that you could threaten us in any particular way. But you did address this, this subject, and I suggested to you in private and personal correspondence, that you show the attorney the video of the proceedings of the meetings you were complaining about. You were not cut off. Neither was Mr. Luttenberger. You were given a point of order and allowed to continue on all of your public comments, which you did. Now, you may not realize that, but everybody here and everybody who watched understands that. I just wanted to point that out to you, just so you understand the truth, because you're big on truth. We can tell that. In a more serious light, I had a lot of people talk to me about the city's response to the storm, and again, well done. I didn't hear one bad comment at all. Chief, your police department was outstanding as usual. Fire department was fantastic. Scott, your department was amazing. Well done. I just want, echoing what everybody else said, but I just want you to know, I'm hearing from the public the same thing, and I think, I think that's important. We did a great job. And I say "we" because I think we're all, we're all part of this, but you guys really did the work, and you were out there early. I agree with Mr. Stonehouse and Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini. I think it's something that as a commission, we really need to look at very, very seriously now, getting some federal money and, one way or another, really putting, getting a push on completing Lake Shore Drive so it works for us and works for the city, so that we don't have to go through this again. And Public Works can check that off of their to-do list when it comes to a, to a storm. Also want to mention too, election day is coming up next week. Please, 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 vote. It's very, very important. I honestly don't care who you vote for, well, I do, but I'm not going to campaign here, but it's, it's much more important that you get out and vote. People have given their lives and are giving their lives today for that right that we have. My opinion personally, the best way we can honor our vets, men and women who are in it and have been in it, and gave all, some gave some, but to vote. It's one of our most basic American rights. Please, please, go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to echo that, and remind everybody that before this commission meets again, there'll be an election. Three seats on the commission are up for election. There's a state House of Representatives that is also up for election. So I would encourage everyone to vote. Speaking of the city commission election, this is my last city commission meeting, and I would like to thank the voters of Marquette. It's been an honor to, to serve on the commission and hopefully represent, represent some of your views. It's been an honor working with my fellow commissioners. I've enjoyed this. I've learned a lot, and, but I've particularly enjoyed the collegiality. We may not always agree, but I think we walk out of here enlightened with our viewpoints with each other, and, and I've enjoyed that too. I'd like to thank the city manager, Mike Angeli, for his friendship, his support, the, the trust that we have in him and his staff. They've always shown good cheer, respect, collegiality, and support, and I'd like to thank them, not just the department heads, but right down to the, to all the workers in all the departments. So, a big thank you. And again, thank you for the honor of serving.
Thank you. Couple of things. Harrison Avenue, the reason it took so long, longer than normal, this was a busy construction year, and trying to find a crew that could, a big crew that could come in and do the cement work and work around the DPW workers is very, was hard to find. The crew that worked on the cement work was a small crew, and consequently, it took them time to do that. Just, it was hard to find workers because there was so much work in the city this summer. Number two, the Halloween spectacle was Sunday night, last night. If you didn't get a chance to see it, you missed something pretty spectacular. It was well done. It was well attended. It was on Bluff Street by the American Legion Hall. It was like a natural setting there. It's like a nice amphitheater. So it was a little cool, but it was well done. It's something each year you should not miss. It was, we got to thank our Arts and Culture Committee and probably others for putting on a wonderful show. And, I have to say, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve these past three years with Commissioner Conley. I felt that he served Marquette well. You could tell that he always did his homework, because when he showed up, came to every meeting, he was well-prepared. He offered well, thought-out opinions, and he truly cared that we would do the right thing for the city of Marquette. We didn't always agree on every issue. Tonight, you know, case in point, but after any vote, he was always ready to move forward. He never held that, held back on that. So we lose a conscientious commissioner, but I hope he'll continue to volunteer and help keep Marquette moving forward. So, in appreciation for his years of service, on behalf of the city commission and the rest of the city, we have this plaque that I'd like to present to him. If you'd stand. This is an official presentation. This is the plaque. It just says, "The Outstanding Service Award Presented to Mike Conley in appreciation of your service on the Marquette City Commission, 2014 to 2017." We're going to miss you. So thank you and good luck. Your grandchildren will be happy to see you more often.
Thank you very much.
I expect to see that on the wall somewhere. That's a high-dollar item, right there. Thank you also, Commissioner Conley, for serving. It's been fun working with you, and I do appreciate your, your time here, and I'm going to be sorry to see you go. Did that sound sincere? Okay. The last thing is, one other thing. Still a week away, but my, my next community office hours will be on the, on the 8th of November at 10:00 a.m. at the Peter White Public Library, a week from Wednesday. Thank you. We are adjourned.